Thank you ladies and gentlemen for being here this evening. Let me take a moment to get organized here. Okay, Minnie, do we have the signups from back there? If there's anybody who didn't sign up, would you please do so? Just so... Okay. I didn't know anything about that. I didn't, there wasn't anything on the city website regarding that. I do understand that in the past little cards have been dispersed by TechStot. But what we're gonna go by is we're gonna go by everybody who's signed up, okay, which is going to be public record. And then on the city's website at the completion of all of this, we don't have any cards. Who said? Well, I understand that and I'm sure that after we get to the end of this, Brother Dooling, that we'll have some sort of way that, on the website, to explain how we're going to, how you can express yourself in that way. Whether it be a website or whether it be whatever it is. We will make sure that you get the information for that. We are not, we will not hand out cards like that. Okay, thank you Brother Dooling. Who put the information out? Well, I would get with Ms. Winger afterwards and find out exactly what is going on there. The city is not, hold on. The city is not going to issue cards regarding this manner. And I'm sure that somewhere down the road after this, after this here, there will be a way to express your comments on that, whether it be a website or whether it be instruction from the city. All right. I'm calling the City of Castle Hills' regular meeting dated December the 12th to order. It is now 6:49. And I am calling this meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present with the exception of Mr. Gregory, who is absent this evening. Just so you know, in our earlier special meeting, there were two items that we pulled in order to put at the end of this because we didn't want to hold up this particular meeting. It's going to be a discussion brought forward by Mr. Trevino in order to find out how we're gonna move forward with the street committee from this point forward. And also, an item to approve buying our new fire truck, which we found one out there at a very reduced cost based on what we're looking for in the quality of a truck. In the meantime, I would like to ask Pastor Roger Pupart of Wayside Chapel to come forward for the invocation. Pastor?
Thank you Mayor Howell. Will you all join me please as we go to the Lord in prayer? Lord God, you tell us in Psalm 127, unless the Lord watches the city, the watchmen guard the city in vain. We know, Lord God, that whether we're talking about our fire department or our police officers, you are the one that keeps Castle Hills safe. But you also tell us in your word, blessed are the peacemakers. And you've raised up men and women to watch over us. And tonight, Lord, we want to honor the service of two of your choice servants. Sergeant Steve Hart, who has given 29 years to the citizens of Castle Hills. We thank you, Lord, for his time on the street and the sacrifice he and his family have made. We thank you, Lord, for the service and sacrifice and leadership of Chief Wayne Davis as well, who has given just over two decades, 20 years, to this department and to us, the citizens of this city. We thank you, Lord, for these men. We thank you for their service. We thank you for watching over us through them. And we thank you, Lord, as well, for the new chief, for Johnny Siemens, who has been under Chief Davis' leadership and now the mantle is being passed to him to lead this department. We pray you would give him just wisdom and the ability to lead and guide the officers under his care as they care for us. Lord, we want to thank you for these individuals. We want to thank you for their service to us. We want to thank you, Father, for the opportunity to gather tonight to honor them, as well as to talk about the other business. So we pray you would grant to the city officials and the highway folks and all of us your leading and guiding and wisdom as this discussion takes place. We commit our time to you in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Roger. This past year, I have met with the Alamo area Council of Boy Scouts and I will actually be on one of their boards. And so I've asked them to participate in any pledge of allegiance or presentation of colors. And Mr. A.J. Chaney, who is the representative for our area, goes all the way to Bernie, A.J. We have two of his scouts tonight in order to give our pledge of allegiance. So would you please welcome Trey Vella and R.J. Chaney to come forward? And let's honor our flag, please. If you'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen. Let's give them a hand. Okay. The next thing I would like to do is, we're going to honor with recognition, we actually did a resolution on each one of these individuals, which is a huge deal because it goes in permanent record. And the first resolution is 2017-12-12F. And it's recognizing Sergeant Hart. The second one will be resolution number 207-12-12G. And that's the recognition of Chief Wayne Davis. And with that said, I have asked one of our former mayors, who was helped and was instrumental in moving both of these gentlemen's career forward, as we all were. They didn't need much help, though. So with that said, I would like to invite former Mayor Bruce Smiley to the front to present those letters of recommendation. And I'll be finishing it up with Johnny Siemens. Bruce?
Thank you Mayor and thank you so much for giving me the honor to be able to read these proclamations, these resolutions, I get them mixed up, and say a couple of words and they will be extremely brief. Sergeant Hart, Steve Hart has been with the department about 30 years. He is, when you talk to citizens and you say, you know, Sergeant Hart's retiring, you see this sort of cringe because Sergeant Hart is the citizen's officer. Sergeant Hart, you see him everywhere. He has represented different groups and his service has been absolutely admirable. The resolution that was passed by council, a resolution of the City of Castle Hills, Texas commending Steve Hart for 29-plus years of loyal employment in the Castle Hills Police Department and honoring him for his faithfulness, dedicated service to the residents of the City of Castle Hills. Steve, are you here? Come over here. All of a sudden, I felt very lonely up here. Okay, please. By the way, I did, and I will continue with this, but his wife Drew has been as big a service to Castle Hills and the city of, supporting our citizens. And Steve's tenure is anybody we know. Thank you Drew. Whereas Steve Hart began his service to the Castle Hills Police Department on January 1st of 1988. Whereas in 1988, he began working in the police department as a patrolman, promoted to corporal in 1992, promoted to sergeant in 1995, making public service his lifelong career until his retirement on October 30th, 2017. And whereas Steve Hart has always faithfully performed his duties in an outstanding manner and has been an invaluable member of our police department, epitomizing a citizen's patrolman. And whereas Steve Hart committed to his duties as a public servant, always left citizens comforted knowing he was on duty. And whereas Steve Hart's dedication to the community and service before self helped to instill a sense of importance and resolve in his fellow coworkers, further excelling Castle Hills Police Department standards. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City of Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, section one, the city council recognizes Steve Hart's 29 years of loyal service to the community. Section two, that the city council, along with the citizens, wishes to thank Steve Hart for his exemplary service to the City of Castle Hills and congratulates him for attaining the success that he has worked so hard to achieve. And section three, that a copy of this resolution shall be read in the full minutes of the meeting at which this resolution is enacted and that the original thereof subscribed by all of the members of the city council shall be presented to Steve Hart with the gratitude and appreciation of the people of the City of Castle Hills, passed and adopted this day, the 12th day of December, 2017. Steve, congratulations and thank you. Thank you. Got it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. You'll get this after somebody signs it.
Yes, sir.
Everybody come in. Y'all gonna stand over there by yourselves. This is a very special time. It's with a very heavy heart that we bid goodbye to Wayne. It's with a full heart that we look to the future. But it is definitely mixed emotions for me personally, as well as I know it is many of you. This particular chief has accomplished so much in our city. He took a good police department, a good police department, and made it an exemplary police department. There has never, ever been a question in the department's mind and in Wayne's mind that our citizens come first. Now, as one of the people that he suffered, as one of the, I was gonna say one of the fools, I didn't mean that. Some of the foolishness that happens sometimes in our political arena, Wayne never wavered. He took me to the woodshed a couple of times to explain to me how things were actually done. And we've had a couple of observations over the years where people said, my God, we didn't know your chief of police actually ran the city. And I said, well, he sure did while I was mayor. But Wayne's a good man. He's a superman. He's done a great job. He is admired by his colleagues. He was one of the top-ranked students in the FBI Academy Chief School, which is an incredible honor that he brought to our city. So, and I'm not gonna cry during this, okay? City of Castle Hills, Texas, resolution number 2017-12-12G. A resolution of the City of Castle Hills, Texas commending Wayne Davis for 20-plus years of loyal employment, Castle Hills Police Department, and honoring him for his faithful and dedicated service to the residents of the City of Castle Hills. Whereas Wayne Davis began his service to the Castle Hills Police Department on August 16th, 1997. And whereas in 1997, he began working in the police department as a patrolman, promoted to a detective in 1999, promoted to corporal of CID in 2005, promoted to captain in 2009, and promoted to chief in 2013, making public service his lifelong career until his retirement on January 6th, 2018. And whereas Wayne Davis has managed to sustain the highest levels of service throughout his career and in every capacity he has ever served in. And whereas Wayne Davis, among his many accomplishments, was solely responsible for the largest monetary seizure in agency history in the City of Castle Hills. And whereas Wayne Davis was appointed to serve as a board member for the International Association of Chiefs of Police, IACP, a testament to his standing among his colleagues in his profession. And whereas Wayne Davis' effort to put citizens first has never been more obvious than his tireless work with council and the mayors to maintain local control of the City of Castle Hills Police Department's dispatch center. Efforts here ensured continued favorable response times of exemplary service and safety to the citizens of our city. Wayne Davis' commitment to the service before self, dedication to duty, and leadership skills have brought Castle Hills Police Department to the forefront in policing throughout the improved fitness standards, training, and professionalism. Efforts here have helped our department achieve and maintain its outstanding reputation. And Wayne Davis, most importantly, has left it better than he found it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, that section one, City of Castle Hills, city council recognizes Wayne Davis' 20-plus years of loyal service to the community. Section two, that the city council, along with the citizens, wishes to thank Wayne for his exemplary service to the City of Castle Hills and congratulates him for attaining the success that he has worked so hard to achieve. And section three, that a copy of this resolution shall be read into the minutes of the meeting at which this resolution is enacted and that the original thereof subscribed by all members of the city council shall be presented to Wayne Davis with the gratitude and appreciation of the people of the City of Castle Hills, passed and adopted this 12th day of December, 2017.
This is a flag that also flew over our city. And it's also signed by Congressman Lamar Smith. And it's just a small appreciation of what, how we feel about you. And I'm gonna say a few words here in a minute. I know nobody knows it. I'm not short of words. So, but we want to present this to you to hang on a very sturdy wall. Or in your boat. And we would like for you to just know how much we enjoyed working for you. We love you, Chief. And wish you the best. And out there bay fishing, I can see it already. So, thank you Chief. I want to acknowledge one of our residents who actually paid for the frames and had them professionally done. Jenna, are you out there somewhere? Thank you Jenna. Thank you and Quentin both for being the residents that you are and stepping forward when we needed things and still need things in the future. So, I want to take a brief moment. I want to take a brief moment about some history about this young man. And it will be brief, I promise. He, of course, is from Halotas. If most of you know where John Flora's store is, he grew up across the street. And that's another story, but not to be told today. But anyway, what, when he came to our city as a detective, I believe it was, right? A patrolman? And from day one, I've been involved in politics here for a number of years, and he told me that he was gonna be the chief someday. And I know all of his friends out in Halotas and we commonly call him Woody. If you kind of look at him in a certain way with the light, Woody from Toy Story, well, it caught on. And so when we're talking on the phone about certain things, and I'll say, well, who's that? Well, it was Woody. And anyway, he kind of had to be there to accept the joke. But anyway, you made it. You made it. You made it bigger and better. As former Mayor Smiley said, you left behind something that we just, I don't know how the city will ever repay you for that. Everything is organized, everything is shipshape for the next. Ironically enough, these two grew up together. And the next person that I'm gonna present this to also became the chief. Both of these gentlemen were picked by the FBI to go to their most coveted school in Kowano. And they both, the instructors up there called me and told me they were both exemplar, exempl, you know. Sorry. I took some Benadryl. So hang on. Exemplary students. And that says something, okay, for you and them. So Chief, thanks again. Have fun out there in the bay. And take care of yourself. The next thing we're gonna do is we're going to do the law enforcement oath of honor for our chief coming in. Johnny, would you step forward, please? The City of Castle Hills, law enforcement oath of honor. Right here. You tell me what to do, okay? This is a law enforcement oath of honor. And it is official. So Johnny, this is on my honor, I Johnny N. Siemens, accept appointment to the office of the chief of police.
On my honor, I John N. Siemens, accept the appointment to the office of the chief of police.
For the City of Castle Hills?
For the City of Castle Hills, Texas.
And as such?
And as such?
I will never betray my badge, my integrity?
I will never betray my badge, my integrity?
My character or the public trust?
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for their actions?
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the laws of...
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the laws of...
The City of Castle Hills, Bear County, State of Texas, signed Timothy A. Howell.
The City of Castle Hills, Bear County, State of Texas.
Thank you. Johnny, if you'll sign this right here? Chief, chiefs?
I have a couple of stars that I won't be needing anymore, but I know somebody that will.
For those of you who don't know, those stars represent the chief star. If you watch Chief McManus on TV, I think he's got about five of them. But we're proud of the one that Johnny has.
Real quick, I'm just gonna touch real quick on me exiting and Chief Siemens coming in to City of Castle Hills as the police chief. I'm confident the city of, citizens of Castle Hills are in great, great hands. Johnny is a God-fearing man. He's a good-hearted individual. He'll do the right thing at any given time, all the time. And I'm confident that the city's gonna move forward, the police department's gonna take it to the next level. You know, you hand off the ball whenever you think that somebody else can take it a little further than you did or could. And I believe that's where we're at with Johnny. And I'm proud of no Johnny. He's a great, great individual. I can't speak enough about him. And he's gonna keep you safe out there. And if you ever need him, he'll call you back. He's that kind of chief. He's gonna take care of his men. He's gonna take care of the citizens of Castle Hills. So rest assured that that's gonna be the case. So thank you very much for allowing me to serve you for 20-plus years. You've been my friend. So thank you very much for allowing me to serve you for 20-plus years, my friend.
Okay. We're gonna move along here, and next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. Now, this is citizens to be heard on a non-agenda item, which is TechStot's on the agenda. So this is a non-agenda item. And we have one person signed up. Did you, did you want to say anything, Leslie? Leslie? Did you, did you want to say anything under citizens to be heard?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. There must be one and two on the other thing. So there were no citizens, hang on. There was one citizen. Now, is there anyone, because I think some people signed up on the sheet, it was pretty confusing back there, that wanted to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Ackley? That's fine. Go ahead, sir. Why don't you step forward, Mr. Ackley? Kurt, you wanna turn the podium around, please?
Thank you. Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. I wanted to report that last week at the night of the big snowstorm, I attended the kickoff meeting for the climate plan and the climate implementation plan sponsored by the City of San Antonio and CPS Energy. At that time, Mayor Nuremberg, members of the council, President of UTSA, and a guest speaker, Dr. Katherine Hayo from Texas Tech University, talked about the need for, planning for climate change. And the City of San Antonio has awarded a grant of, CPS has awarded a grant of $500,000 to UTSA to undertake this study for this climate action plan, which will be undertaken over the next year and a half. Although this is sponsored by the City of San Antonio, the climate action plan will affect all of us, and the makers of the plan are encouraging a wide participation by all the cities in the area and to provide input to them. It'll be taking place over the next year and a half. We can't over, underemphasize the need for this efficient planning, because as Hurricane Harvey showed, when people were walking out in neck-deep water, or when their homes were above the 500-year floodplain, for example, this is a manifestation of sorts of changes that we'll be seeing all across the state. So I encourage everybody to participate in this activity, and we, we will come up with a climate action plan, and it will impact everything that we do in Castle Hills, whether it's energy generation, air quality, drainage, all those activities, because we are completely surrounded by San Antonio, and, and we will not go forward unless we are participating in it. And so we encourage all your participation in that activity.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Brother William Dooling, 201, Gladiola Lane. And I, I, I'm here tonight because, due to certain health conditions, I may not be able to be back until at least March. And so I wanted to bring this to your attention, especially with other changes in the city that are imminent. I do not know if you're aware of the, what I consider a total disaster that has occurred on Gladiola Lane. If you are, I'm sorry to bother you, but I don't think a lot of people know. That was one of the first, well, it was the second street to be paved in the southern side of the city. And within the last, I guess, two weeks, three weeks, Saws has dug approximately, as near as I can count, eight, maybe nine trenches across the street for work that should have been done when the street was torn up for sewer work in the first place. Now, again, it's just a tragedy, and we'll wring our hands and say, "Well, there's nothing can be done about it." But I submit to you, and this was under a different city manager when that work was done, so it has nothing to do with Mr. Vandewally, but somebody dropped the ball in not managing the contract. And I have spoken for years, and I'm certainly not volunteering myself for it, but I think we seem to have a lot of money to throw around on various things. We need a, what, where I come from, my business, a clerk of the works who is responsible for managing those contracts and seeing what's supposed to be done actually gets done, that the concrete is of the right density, that the holes are the right depth, that the clay pipes are actually removed when they're supposed to be removed, and on, and on, and on. And so it's, it's just like a semi-sope opera on Gladiola about how much incompetence Saws has. And their, their chairman and president lives in the City of Castle Hills. It absolutely astounds me that you could tear up a street to replace the sewer and not actually do it. So I just passed that along. I don't expect anybody to say anything tonight, and I don't think they should, but it's just this issue of contracts being flubbed. I mean, we could start with the one over here on Lemonwood years ago, where Bear Met, you know, did something, and nobody paid attention, and six months later, the whole street starts rising up in the air and falling apart. And so these things just, you know, need to be better managed. And I don't think you can use current staff to do all of that. You need to have somebody that's their only job to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Folks, as you know, this is a period of time when we have citizens to be heard, and we cannot respond to Brother Dooling, but what we can do at this point is, Mr. Paul, would you, would you visit with Mr., with Brother Dooling, and, and let's follow up on, he's absolutely right, on, on how we should go ahead and move forward with that particular thing? And get him a satisfied answer back, please. That was it on citizens to be heard. Is that correct? On non-agenda items. Okay. The next item, it's a discussion item, it's not an action item. And what it is, is we have invited TechStot in to, they actually came over and had a sort of seminar here regarding what, what the proposals were in the area. And so there was some discussion on that, and also some, some opinions that we wanted to clear up. So what ended up happening was our city manager contacted TechStot, and I believe they set up a, a small meeting at your office that we, for some reason, there was a communication situation where we didn't, we didn't actually get out there. I believe it was on December the 9th, wasn't it? Or last couple of week, couple of weeks ago, it wasn't your fault, okay? It was a situation where we were unclear exactly what, what we were supposed to do is react as far as the city is concerned. So what we did was we invited them back, and today is the day, and to actually come up and we will discuss the feasibility study and identify potential traffic flow implements of 410, they're actually calling it the 410-281 San Pedro Avenue. Now, when we talked about that, I understand, Kurt, did you want to jump in any time here and kind of fill in the cracks on, on how we actually determined that we would be talking only this evening about Honeysuckle, the Honeysuckle proposed closure, and what's involved with that? And I did want to, because of, of all the people here, the Honeysuckle area over there, since it is in the City of Castle Hills, any, we will only, I'll only be allowing Castle Hills people to speak. If you signed up, we will have other ways that you can get in touch with TechStot on our website as far as your comments or anything like that. But we wanted to make sure that, that TechStot was here to explain their part of what they have proposed. So, with that said, Kurt?
Yes, Mayor, just, we didn't have a meeting in November, somebody else did with TechStot, and we had some residents that showed up to that meeting. That's, I think you got that report from somebody else. But I've been speaking with Jonathan Bean from TechStot, and they were willing to come out and brief the council, because he understood there were a number of concerns, so they came out. We've got a big showing here of folks. They are here as guests to, to brief the project, and I'm sure they're gonna be willing to hear our concerns. I just would ask that everybody keep, be as civil as they possibly can and communicate what the, what concerns they have with this project. So I would open it up to TechStot, we'll set up their presentation, and then open it up to the floor for questions, Mayor, would be my suggestion.
Perfect. Okay. And with that said, we're going to decipher, go through all these sign-up sheets, and we'll be calling out names and make sure that everyone that speaks this evening has a Castle Hills address. Secondly, I would want to remind you that these are proposed situations that TechStot wants to do. So we want, we want to stay as friendly as possible with our partners. And, you know, we're not here to, these implements are, are proposed to take place in what, 2021? Yeah, there you go. Okay, good. Minnie, can we make sure I got all the sign-up sheets up here? Excuse me? No, this is a discussion item. Before we get started, I do want to point out who's repris, who's represented here this evening from a legislative point of view. And we have Senator Donna Campbell's office, represented by Nathan McDaniel. We have our own, we have our own Diego Bernal, who is our state representative. He's here with Anita Fernandez. And we also have a representative from Jose Menendez's office, and that is Donovan Rodriguez. So we're all represented here from the representatives of this area. And, gentlemen?
Well, I'm really flattered that this many people came out to hear me speak tonight. I'm Jonathan Bean. I'm the Director of Transportation Planning and Development for TechStot. Absolutely. I can hear myself just fine. Sorry about that. Very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about 410 and the improvements that we're proposing. And 410, in this stretch of 410, is, has some very obvious needs and problems that we're working to address. First of all, this section of 410 is the 37th most congested corridor roadway in the state of Texas. So a very congested corridor. It's the third highest congested corridor at 290,000 vehicles per day on this stretch of 410. In addition to the congestion, in the last five years, there have been over 5,000 crashes. It's a very high, over the statewide average crash rate that has been experienced. 5,000 over the last five years. So that really, that equates to about three per day. I know there was one out there as we came in tonight. So a very serious issue that we're trying to address in regards to the safety as well as the congestion. And, and that's a good question. It's between the, the study area and Jacobs Engineering. We'll talk, talk about some of the details after I sit down. But it really covers 410 from about West Avenue over to just east of 281. And then there's stretches along 281 that we studied north and south of 410. But what we, we've done to date is in about the middle of 2016, we engaged Jacobs Engineering, Jeremy Wyndham here that's pulling up the presentation now, he'll get up and talk in just a minute, but he's the project manager for our traffic study that we've, we've begun and have worked on for about the last 18 months. And the purpose of that study was really to dissect the problems that we know are obvious, but dissect them, really get into the weeds and the details as to what the problems are, and to try to find some solutions to those traffic problems. And so really what we've done to date, and where we are today, is a traffic study. It's, it's a study only with some recommendations, some technically preferred recommendations at this point. We've gone through some stakeholder involvement early on to help us identify some problems, and, and then also to help us find some solutions. And to date, we've, we've put some, some of our preferred solutions on the table. And many times when that happens, there, there is a little bit of a dialogue at that point, which is much like what, why we're here tonight. And so this is very normal. Sometimes with a traffic study, you end up with some trade-offs. In order to really make an improvement, when you're the 37th highest congested corridor in the state, and you have 5,000 crashes in, in a five-year period, you know there's a problem. And typically, in situations like this, there are some trade-offs, and Jeremy will talk through some of the, the trade-offs that are part of the, the proposal at this time. But I want to be very clear, this is just a traffic study at this point, there is nothing set in stone. This dialogue and this discussion is very much part of this. We want to hear from you. It's very important to us. It's, we're not ready to turn dirt in, in the next few months, not even in, in the next couple of years. It'll probably be a little bit of time before we can do anything on 410 because of the development of our plans, environmental clearance that would have to occur. There's a lot of work that has to be done after we do decide exactly what we are going to do. So we're glad you're here tonight, we're glad you're here to, to give us your feedback on, on the plan to date, and we hope you stay engaged in the process throughout. I'm now gonna turn it over to Jeremy Wyndham. He's our project manager with Jacobs Engineering. And, and once, once we're done, I want to say we will have an opportunity for a question and answer. Okay? Sure. Jeremy, Jeremy will go through the study area after, after I sit down. But thank you again for, for being here tonight. And I'll be up to help answer questions. Oh, I did want to also introduce, we do have a couple of my staff here tonight as well, Clayton Rips, as well as Richard De La Cruz, and Fernando, he's one of our new staff members. And so they're here, and if, if I can't answer a question, they, they may stand up and help me answer a question. So, thank you. Jeremy?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Wyndham. I work with Jacobs Engineering. For the record, my address is 911 Central Parkway North, Suite 425 in San Antonio. This first slide shows the study area for the feasibility study. It included the section of 410 from Honeysuckle, actually really from West Avenue on the west end of the corridor to Nakadocas on the east end of the corridor. It also included the section of US 281 from Jones-Maltzberger at the southern end up to Nakoma on the north end. And it also included the section of San Pedro Avenue from US 281 down to Rector just south of 410. This is the process that we've been going through in terms of reaching out to the stakeholders and the public and the agencies in the corridor. We started with about a, a little bit over a year ago with some initial interviews with the stakeholders. We met with both cities. We met with VIA, the ISDs, major employment and retail areas in the corridor to get their input. We sent a letter out to the elected officials in the corridor about a year ago. Had some meetings with the agencies. meetings with the agencies, and then we went out to the public for our first open house about a year ago. And the purpose of that meeting was to hear from the citizens and users of the 410, 281 and San Pedro corridors, what are their, what are their concerns, what are their issues in the corridor. And then we went, we published a newsletter in the spring of, of 2017 documenting everything that we heard from the agencies and the stakeholders and the public, and during that same timeframe that we began looking at different alternatives to, to improve the, the traffic flow and safety in, in the three corridors. Had some additional interviews with stakeholders to begin looking at some of those improvements. Published another newsletter a few months ago in the fall, sent some additional letters out to the elected officials, had some additional meetings with the agencies, and then we went back out to the public for our second public meeting in October. It was at the second public meeting, it was an open house, and just want to pause and say thank you to the city of Castle Hills for hosting both of those open houses, they were very helpful in that. The second open house is where we presented what we're calling our technically preferred alternative, and that was a culmination of a, of quite a long process of looking at the different areas in the corridor that needed improvements, coming up with different groupings of concepts, and picking the best of those ones in terms of safety and traffic flow to come up with our technically preferred alternative. And then we've had, been having some additional meetings since then, including the meeting tonight. One thing I want to make sure everyone understands, because we've heard that, that there's a concern about, you know, this being a done deal, that there's no more chance for public involvement, we are still very early in the overall process. We're essentially in the first stage, what we call the planning and programming, this is a feasibility study, we don't even have a, a full survey yet. The, the next stage is the schematic design, we still have to go through all of the environmental analysis and documentation, then the, you know, even after that, there's, there's public involvement through that process, and it's only after that that we start to do the final design and acquiring any right-of-way and, and construction. So we are still very early in the public involvement process, there's still opportunities to, to make changes to the proposed improvements. So Jonathan mentioned that one of the things that we wanted to look at in this, in this corridor were safety improvements. On the right side of this slide, we've got some videos that we took of the corridor. The top right corner is eastbound on 410, just east of, of San Pedro, where you've got the, the ramp coming in from that overpass and people making some pretty dangerous maneuvers to get over to the freeway there. There go a couple. That wasn't one of y'all, was it? And then in the, in the, in the lower right-hand corner, we've got, now we're just east of McCullough with the, the US 281 interchange behind us, and as you know, the, the ramps from 281, they neck down to one lane, and then you have to, you have to weave in with the traffic on the main lanes as traffic's trying to exit to San Pedro, so, you know, lots of, lots of sort of areas of congestion, lots of dangerous maneuvers going on that we wanted to have a look at. We are. And it's all tied together. And on the, on the left side, we show the, what we call a hotspot map, this, this shows all the crashes that we, that we found in the last five years. There have been over 5,000 crashes in the last five years, more than 1,000 per year, and including 17 fatalities. So there's some pretty serious problems from a safety standpoint. The crash rate in the, in these corridors is higher than the statewide average, so definitely some, some things that, that we wanted to look at. The red star is a location of a fatality.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do is, we're going to have this available on our website incomplete, the cameras up here are bringing it in, so you'll be able to see this anytime you want, 24/7 for the next year, okay? So I just wanted to point that out, and I do realize there's things that you want to ask right away, we've got 200 people in here, okay? So I'd ask that we give the gentleman some respect and finish what he's doing, and then you can pull it up on the website, go frame by frame for the whole thing. Thank you very much.
This, this slide shows what we heard from the public at the, the first open house in terms of concerns, lots of concerns with the, the merging and the weaving, you know, the mixing of the traffic, concerns of bottlenecks where all the traffic comes together at one location and backs, backs traffic up in, in different directions, the ramps that go from two lanes to one lane before hitting the main lanes, all sorts of other issues, and safety was certainly a, a big concern that was raised. So now I'm going to go into what some of our solutions are that, that are part of the, what we're calling the technical preferred alternative, and I'm going to focus on the 410 corridor because that's what y'all are here to hear about, although we do have improvements along the 281 corridor and the San Pedro corridor as well. So the, the, the main problem, and this is the eastbound direction, between, essentially between Northwest Military and San Pedro, where you've got a, a ramp coming in from Northwest Military in a very short section of freeway before the traffic exits to San Pedro. Any of you that are familiar with that know that the traffic backs up from the exit ramp to San Pedro, people try to get past the queue and jump in at the last minute, you know, lots of problems there, so we were, oh, I got, yeah, yeah, that's right, thank you. So that's, this is the first area that we wanted to try to tackle, one of the bottleneck areas. So the, what we're trying, what we are proposing to do here, and try to follow my little yellow arrows, I hope you can see them, in the, the lower right corner here, we are proposing to take the, the exit ramp to San Pedro, which is currently one lane, and make that two lanes, so we're going to provide some extra capacity there. We also wanted to, as you know, this, this is a very short freeway section here where the traffic's trying to weave, weave onto the freeway and weave off to, off the freeway, so what we'd like to, whoa, sorry. So what we wanted to do there, in order to provide a longer weaving distance and to remove some of the conflicting traffic, we're proposing to close the entrance ramp from Northwest Military. So that, what that allows us to do is to extend the, the extra lane past that point and take out that traffic. Now what that means is that the traffic coming from Northwest Military is going to instead go eat, go to the west on the frontage road, do a U-turn at Honeysuckle, and then we want to get them onto the freeway before they go through Blanco, because we don't want to make Blanco any worse. So what that means is that we want to take the, the current exit ramp here and change that to an entrance ramp. When we do that, we need to then convert the, the current entrance ramp back here to an exit ramp, so this will be, this will be an exit ramp to Honeysuckle and to Blanco. Now what that means is that we're going to have a lot of extra traffic on this section of eastbound frontage road, which is why we're proposing the, the elimination of, of the through movements on Honeysuckle. Still want to allow emergency vehicles to cross there, still want to allow pedestrians and bicycles to cross there, the U-turns will remain open, but in order to make the traffic signals here work better, we want to eliminate the through movements at that location. The second area I want to talk about is a little bit further east between San Pedro and 281. As you know, the entrance ramp comes in from San Pedro, and then the exit ramp to 281 immediately follows that, so again, you've got a lot of mixing of traffic on the main lanes. So here's that section, and you can see San Pedro on the western edge here, and then it goes like this, and this is the, this is Jones-Maltzberger, and this is the, the ramp going up to 281. So what we're proposing here is we want to provide some additional length for that traffic to, to mix and weave on the main lanes, so we're proposing to close the entrance ramp from San Pedro, which is what I'm showing here. What that means is it's going to put extra traffic through the McCullough interchange, but it will also allow us to take that, that extra lane, that auxiliary lane that goes to the 281 ramps, and take that all the way back to the entrance ramp from Blanco, because you know how when you get on at Blanco, there's that very short taper, and then you're mixing in with the traffic, and that's before the entrance ramp from San Pedro. So we're taking out the traffic from San Pedro, and we're giving an extra lane all the way back to Blanco. So Blanco will have its own lane, you have a much longer distance to weave onto the freeway or weave off of the freeway before you get to the 281 ramps. But similar to further west, it's going to put extra traffic on the frontage road. As Jonathan mentioned, this is all about trade-offs, you know, we're trying to improve things on, in the overall corridor, that means helping things on the main lanes, it does mean extra traffic on the frontage roads. So one of the things that that drives is some changes to the, the movements at the McCullough interchange. So what we're proposing here is to still allow the, the traffic to come into McCullough from the east using this channelization here, but to take all, take out the through traffic northbound and southbound on McCullough. The U-turns will still remain in place, and we're going to improve the, the signal operations here, the traffic signal operations by making that just two phases, so either the southbound traffic will be coming through from that westbound movement, like that, or the eastbound traffic will be going, so it'll be a very simple traffic signal, one movement goes, the other movement goes, so it'll, it'll be going a lot quicker, you get a lot more traffic through there. We're also proposing to add an extra lane on this section of frontage road, so that the extra traffic that, that was entering here gets through the, the traffic signal quicker here, has some extra, has an extra lane here, and then they get on the entrance ramp a little bit west of Jones-Maltzberger. The third area that we wanted to look at on, on 410 is in the westbound direction. As y'all know, the, the ramps from 281 come together, they merge down to one lane, which backs things up, then they get to the 410 main lanes, and they're mixing with the traffic that's trying to exit to San Pedro. That mixes things, that messes things up even further. So we want to solve two things there, we want to provide extra capacity on the ramps, and we want to take out that, that mixing on the, on the main lanes. So here's what we're proposing. We're going to keep two lanes on the, the, what we call the direct connect ramps from 281, we're going to keep two lanes all the way down to the, the 410 main lanes. We are going to, so the exit ramp to San Pedro will only be available to the traffic that's coming off of 281. We're actually going to, we're actually proposing a barrier between the, between the 410 main lanes and the ramps that are coming in from 281. So this, this ramp here will only be available to the traffic coming from 281. We're also proposing to eliminate the, that entrance ramp just west of McCullough that's really close to the intersection, and what that means is that, if you're going to San Pedro, you're going to exit east of McCullough, this area here, and so we're going to make that a two-lane exit ramp. We also have room to add an extra lane on this section of frontage road, and we're going to, by ta- by removing some of the conflicts at this, this intersection here, that traffic signal will stay green for westbound traffic all the time except for when a pedestrian pushes the button. So there won't be any, there won't be any conflicts there, so we'll be able to put a lot more traffic through that intersection. And again, as, as was in the eastbound direction, that's, that's what's driving the proposed changes to the McCullough interchange. It also allows us to have an extra lane on this section of frontage road as you approach San Pedro, so we can get some extra capacity through that intersection, which is already busy. So what is the benefit of these improvements? And these, these benefits are corridor-wide, as Jonathan mentioned and I've mentioned, we're trying to solve some pretty big problems in the overall corridor, so we want to look at the overall improvements. So with the, with the proposed changes, we expect a 10% reduction in crashes. When we look at travel times in the, through the corridor, the, what we call the 2020 do-nothing, so if, if traffic continues to grow out to 2020 and we do nothing to make improvements, the travel time through, through the corridor in the eastbound direction is expected to be about eight minutes, some of you would probably say that's already there today. With the proposed improvements, we get that down below four minutes, so that's a 50% reduction in travel times in the eastbound direction. Similarly, as I'm sure all of you know, there's a, a very heavy movement and lots of congestion, lots of delays for traffic that's headed south on 281 and wanting to get west on, on 410. That's, that's currently a 14, predicted to be a 14-minute trip in, in the year 2020 if we do nothing. With the proposed changes, the extra lane on the ramps, the removing of the, the weaving on the, the frontage road, we can get that down, we're expecting to get that down to around three minutes. So there we've got a 75% reduction in how long it's going to take you to make that movement in the corridor. We also looked at, you know, one of the things that, that causes safety problems is big changes in speed, slow-moving traffic right next to fast-moving traffic, so one of the things that we wanted to look at is, what is the, how, how do these improvements help to sort of even out the, the traffic flows? So with the do-nothing condition, the, the traffic in the eastbound direction is about 14 miles an hour, with the proposed improvements, we get it up to a, a speed similar to the rest of the traffic in the corridor. Similarly, in the AM peak hour, 31 miles an hour up to 64 miles an hour. Here's a couple of simulations from our, our traffic model. We started this model about a little over a year ago, we went out and we did travel time runs, we did a lot of traffic counts, and we, and we calibrated the model so that it would look and provide similar outputs as, as to what you're, what you're seeing. So this is the 2020 do-nothing, you can see the, the traffic backing up from the, the exit ramp to 281 and the, the ramp coming in from San Pedro here. With the proposed changes, the removal of that ramp, the extra capacity in the eastbound direction, that's greatly improved with our technically preferred alternative. Similarly, in the westbound direction, this is that ramp that's just gone from two lanes down to one lane, and it's mixing and weaving with the traffic exiting into San Pedro, keeping that traffic separate through the barrier, we're able to see significant improvements there too. Now, there's been a lot of concerns about the proposed changes at Honeysuckle. We did want to look at, and, and one of the, the early things that we came up with, first of all, we thought about severing it entirely, but with concerns raised about emergency vehicle access from the fire station to the, to the neighborhood to the south, we, we did want to maintain the ability for the emergency vehicles to get through this area, so how would we propose to do that? What we propose is a, a connection, a hardwired connection between the, the traffic signal controller here at the interchange up to the firehouse, so that is, as the fire trucks are exiting the firehouse, they push a button and it turns the signal green for them as they, as they get down to the, to the intersection. To discourage other people, so we, we don't want to actually, you know, completely block it off, we want the fire trucks to be able to get through, of course. To discourage others from, from doing that, we put up some signage and some, some folding bollards. So the fire trucks wouldn't have any difficulty getting through there, it really wouldn't slow them down at all, and with the, with the preemption, they'd be able to go through on a, a green signal as soon as they get to that interchange. Here are some similar videos of our traffic model at this location. What I want to point out here is if we, if we keep the Honeysuckle interchange and signal operating as it currently does, and we add the extra traffic from reversing those ramps, you can see, hopefully you can see, the, the backup from the Honeysuckle interchange is, is getting all the way back to the ramp and onto the freeway, and whenever we get traffic backing up from a frontage road onto a freeway, that's when you start to get the, the big changes in the speeds and traffic, so that's what we wanted to try to eliminate there. And so this, this one shows taking out the, the through traffic on And so this, this one shows taking out the, the through traffic on Honeysuckle and removing the, the traffic signals and allowing that to flow freely. Again, it will still be available to emergency vehicles through their preemption button. There will still be traffic signals there in place so that if a pedestrian or bicycle comes up, they can push the button and they'll get a, a walk signal. It'll stop the traffic on the frontage roads for them as well. So another concern that, that's been raised is how do I, how do I get from the north side to the south side? You know, you've, you've changed my, my path. And we, we looked at both the Honeysuckle and the McCullough interchange. Both of them have alternate ways of getting across. We're actually proposing, I, I'll, I'll go back if there are questions, but we're actually proposing a, a turnaround lane on Northwest Military. So if you are coming from the south up Honeysuckle and you want to get to the north side of the freeway, you'll turn right onto the frontage road, you'll take the, the ramp up to Northwest Military, and then we'll put a turnaround as soon as you get onto Northwest Military that puts you back on the, the westbound frontage road. And if you're coming from the north to the south, you'll turn right on the frontage road, do the U-turn at, at West, and then right turn onto Honeysuckle. And what we found, and we, and y'all feel free to check this yourself, we, we not only tested this in the, in the traffic model, but we also went on to Google Maps and said, okay, what, you know, how long does it take if I go from here to here to here to here to here? And you're adding about a minute to your trip in the Honeysuckle area. And we did similar alternate paths in the McCullough area, and those were really right about the same timeframe. With that, this is the contact information. The, the email address here, we're still taking comments. That's the study email address that comes to me. My, my Jacob's email address is also up there. If you'd like to send me a, a direct email, that's fine too. With that, we turn it over to, but I'll leave, I'll leave this up.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being patient this evening. Kathy, I owe you a personal apology for coming over there and, but we had to really keep some, some control of this area here or if we had everybody asking questions and pointing out, we would have never got anything done. So I personally see that you get the information that you, that you want to see. Second of all, as I look around the room, I see most of you are on my email list. If you're not, please email me at mayor timhowell@gmail.com. I'm going to send out one of my surveys, and I'm glad to say that seven or 800 of you responded to those surveys. And they've been very, very helpful to me as far as what I convey to council and what, and it's all open. If you want to take a look at it, I'll show anybody. What I won't do is send it out, okay? Because I don't want anything to get stretched out of proportion. But what I will do is you can come to City Hall, I'll be glad to show you the records, how it's figured. I don't even see your answers. I don't even know who answered what. But I do know that I get a pulse of the city and how people feel. And so far, it's been, it's been very, very helpful. So with that said, we're going to make sure that everybody signed up, gets to speak tonight. And what I would ask you to do is, is, is please come up here and as I call your name, if you don't want to speak, but you want to express yourself, please, please email me at that address and I'm going to send out that survey and then I'm going to make that survey public in 15 to 30 days depending on how many, how many people. And it'll be based on the presentation tonight, okay? So the first one on the list was Clyde. Clyde, you want to? Okay. Oh, did, did you have a slide?
How many? Two minutes?
Yeah, we've got 100 seconds.
In that case, I guess I got nothing to say.
Well, yeah.
Well.
No, I think I have a few words I can, I can give out. Just for the benefit of the Tech dot people, I wanted to point out a couple of things. So you can see this is Honeysuckle and, and 410. And here is, here's Honeysuckle. Here's the City Hall, the elementary school, fire department, Public Works right over there, two churches right here, both of whom draw, draw congregations from the south side of 410. This elementary school also means that this is a public school crossing. Because we have fire department and police here at the north side, we have to have those, those emergency vehicles have to have access back and forth across 410. I've conferred with both Chief Davis and Chief Dover on this subject, and I've been told that their estimate, both of them, is that this closing of Honeysuckle Lane will increase their response time for emergency responses to the south side of, of Castle Hills by two to four minutes. The reason for that is, is obvious. The provision for the bollards that they're proposing to move up and down to allow emergency vehicles to cross the highway is that it will get, it will take them up to two minutes to go, to go down so that the emergency vehicles can cross the highway. And what that means is from, from the police department or the fire station, it's only about 15 to 35 seconds to the access road to 410. I've timed it. My, my suburban wasn't doing high speed, but we timed it. It's only about 35, 35 seconds at the most to get from the police department or the fire department to this intersection. If these bollards don't go down, it's going to take whatever time it takes for that to happen, for them to add to their response time. Now, as I understand it, there's no backup for those bollards. I don't know about the rest of you, but I just had a 24-hour power outage at my home. And if that's the case, if we have an outage, a power outage, there's no way that bollard's going to go down. That means that the police and fire department have to go one way or the other to get back to the south side of Castle Hills. That's unacceptable. I've been told that the reason we don't want to have this light here is because we have this high-speed egress here from, from 410 westbound to, to Honeysuckle. And that's a Honeysuckle exit, folks. Now, I don't know how it sounds to you, but when you have a Honeysuckle exit and then you're going to close Honeysuckle, that doesn't make good sense. No offense, but that's dumb. Okay? At West Avenue, we have a similar situation.
Clyde, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do two minutes. What I'll do is make sure that you put your slide presentation together. I'll pay to come out to your house to have it filmed. And we'll put it on to make sure that it's on the website, okay?
Okay. The last thing I want to say is that there was no justification provided for reversing the entrance and access points between West and Blanco on the access road crossing Honeysuckle. All that does is put lots of traffic that would exit here all the way down to the, to the school crossing and entering blank, entering 281, rather, San Pedro, entering 410 just west of San Pedro where traffic is already becoming congested. That doesn't make good sense either, friends. Sorry, Mr. Wyndham, but you flunked, I give you an F on, on support.
Thank you, Clyde. Also, on the survey, I'll make sure that I have a, a place where you can respond also with, with different things. Yes. Okay. Before we get too much later, our legislators are getting ready to leave. Mr. Bernal, are you here this evening? Could you come up and say a few words before we promise to get you out of here by eight? Well, we'll put the clock on this one for sure. Leave that.
Good evening. I'll, I'll try to respect the two minutes first. For those of you who haven't met, my name is Diego Bernal. I am your state representative, Texas House District 123. It encloses all of Castle Hills. First, let's get the good stuff out of the way. The first thing that's good is that they're having this conversation with us early on. Normally, they come and tell you that something's a done deal and you, you can't say a thing about it. In this case, they're getting to us very, very early so we can weigh in and let them know what's on our minds. Second is this is an example of government working together. The mayor and Councilman Trevino and Leslie reached out to make sure that we're on the same page. But, but, but I, but I will say this. Part of a, part of a public process is to ensure that you gather information and the feelings of people who have to live with the decisions that are made after the fact, right? And if this room isn't the barometer of the way that the whole, the whole city feels, I think it's safe to say that while there are some really valuable and important points of the overall plan, and I think we all see the value in the overall, in the overall plan, at least the goals of the overall plan, this one part is something that we're not okay with, that we're not necessarily happy with. I actually believe there's more flexibility here and I think there is an alternative. Not to the whole plan. I think we can do most of the plan and I believe there are going to be other parts of the city who aren't happy with that, but that's okay. But this one part, I believe there's flexibility. I believe there's an alternative. I believe there's a Plan B. And so just know that as far as my office is concerned, we're going to push them to present at a certain point, hopefully sooner than later, what that Plan B is. And also feel free to use our office to express your feelings, to tell us how you feel about it. We'll take your, your issues and your concerns and hand-deliver them to Tech dot. They're trying to do a job, they're trying to do a good job. Overall, it's a great plan. I think it will reduce travel times and fatalities, but this one part, this one part, I think we can do without. This would take your city and essentially divide it into two halves. Your, you, as, as small a city you are, you're already split in congressional districts, you're already split in school districts. We don't need to create a one side of town and another side of town. I think there's a way to do it. Stay in touch, you guys. Thank you very much. Two minutes, I'm out.
Appreciate, appreciate that, Bernal. Council, y'all can go ahead and take your seats if you'd like. Next on the agenda, I mean, next on the thing is Mr. Jim Gaines.
I'll stick to it, I'll be shorter than that. My name is Jim Gaines. I live at 503 Antler Drive. I appreciate the job that these gentlemen are trying to do and correct the traffic patterns, but they don't live here. We live here. I use that intersection three or four times a day, not just to go north and south, but to get on the highway and go elsewhere to do my business, to conduct my business, to make money, to pay my property taxes so that we can have all of this stuff. I don't appreciate the fact that my freedom of movement will be restricted for the sake of people at intersections that they should fix first instead of all these trade-offs, these back and forths. It doesn't seem like we're getting a lot of backs to us. We're the ones that are suffering because the intersections that they need to correct were never built correctly in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Before we go to the next one, Donna Campbell, did you want to say anything on the half of Donna Campbell's office or did, because you were going to leave by eight, so?
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, all right.
I was just trying to, I was behind you saying, if there's anything in our office that you've heard, try to make it possible to communicate and tell everyone, or have you, you know, that you do, that we're, we're lucky to be defined as a little bit of a credit card.
Thank you, Nathan. Donovan, was there anything that Mr. Jose's, Mr. Menendez's office wanted to say? Jose Menendez is our state senator. Thank you, Councilman Trevino, for, for getting with them personally. Leslie, you also, I believe, were involved in making sure that, that they were made aware of this early. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, I'm Donovan Rodriguez, represent Senator Jose Menendez. Just want to let you know that we have been ahead of this issue. We've been working with a, a lot of y'all here in the neighborhood. We, we get inquiries daily on this issue. Senator has met with Tech dot. Senator believes in keeping Honeysuckle open and will continue to work with y'all in getting that done. We have great relationships with Representative Bernal and with Senator Campbell, and together we'll be able to hopefully achieve what we want out of this.
Thank you, Donovan. Okay, next on the list is Roxanne Henkin.
I'm Roxanne Henkin at 207 Northcrest, and I'm here, I'm going to be very brief. The main thing that I'm concerned about, including everything that's been said already, is that we're one town. And those of us who live in Castle Hills go through Honeysuckle all the time, and this is going to divide us. My ex-neighbour, Colonel King, said that when they built the highway in Castle Hills back when he first had his house, that people were very concerned about our town being divided. And this is one of the main ways that we stay one town. And to close, close Honeysuckle divides the town in ways that are not acceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Henkin. Patsy's also one of our election judges. Good to see you, Patsy.
Hi, I'm Patsy Taylor, 388 Town View. And as the mayor said, I'm an election judge. One of the problems will be with the elections department, I feel certain, because I don't know how many of you are aware that they have these big carts that they load on trucks where they transport the voting machines back and forth. They have to make two deliveries here, one for early voting, one for Election Day. These trucks are going to have to use the small-city streets rather than the main thoroughfare if they close this, which is going to be rough on the streets, and I think the citizens need to consider that.
Thank you, Patsy. Willie Williamson.
I live at 502 Antler Drive, and I've lived in the city for 40 years. And I use Honeysuckle every day, whether to get on the 410 or the expressway, or to get from my home to the other side to go shopping. And I feel like that would take away, you know, from getting from one side to the other if we close Honeysuckle. And also, I feel like it divides the city. And also, I'm concerned about putting more traffic on Jackson Keller, which there are three schools. And if you, and most people who are trying to get kids to school, go to work, or vice versa, picking up school, coming home from work, Jackson Keller is a nightmare. I mean, there's times I had to wait to get through four stop signs just to cross Jackson Keller to get to the other side. And Blanco sometimes can get pretty rough too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Sherry's father was the first mayor of Castle Hills.
My name is Sherry Yecul, and I live at 136 Shalimar. We were out here before Castle Hills was even incorporated. My grandparents were out here in the early 1950s. They took one half, Tech dot did, of our property to put in what was known as Loop 13, now 410, so the city of San Antonio could grow. At that time, it divided us. Secondly, now they want to make a division again where they're trying to divide us. And I'm sorry to say this, but I feel like Castle Hills has now become collateral damage for the city of San Antonio and all the surrounding areas so they can have their traffic. And I would implore Tech dot to please reconsider. Honeysuckle- Honeysuckle is a main artery, and shutting off Castle Hills is like taking part of your heart artery and clogging it up. And there's not going to be any life. Please, I implore you, do not cut off Honeysuckle to make corrections. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. John Shoddy.
I'm John Strebe. I live at 157 Castle Hills Drive, which is the corner of Honeysuckle and Castle Hills. I have a bunch of stuff written here, but with 100 people after me. Basically, my wife and I just totally agree, disagree with this change that's coming up. We use that, the road under, Honeysuckle under 410, all the time. I mean, it's just, it's a major, major excess. And as my wife just told me, the emphasis seems to be on traffic. It doesn't seem to be on the needs of the community that all this traffic is going through. And it's not only Honeysuckle. It looks to me like they're, you know, they're going to mess up McCullough by cutting, you know, access off to that, you know, that neighborhood. And one of the issues that I've noticed probably just recently is the amount of time that you have to wait at the light on the access road to turn left on Honeysuckle or get through that whole area. About a year ago, somehow, they recycled the light where the access road, or no, Honeysuckle seems to be the prominent, you know, it gets more time, you know, for traffic to get through there, where, you know, where the access road is just backed up because of the way the lights are cycled. And also, I think all that area under Honeysuckle could be reconfigured where, you know, they had left-turn lanes, you know, changed over, you know, where you turn left on each side, you know, without, you know, having to wait for someone, you know, to go through. It's, you know, you know, just reconfigured. And I think that whole area on Honeysuckle, it would move the traffic through Honeysuckle underneath 410. So, anyway, but we just totally disagree with this. I think there's other options that they could use. And I think one of the problems was is that in the past, I forgot when, four or five years ago, when they reconfigured all that stuff with Northwest Military Drive, I think that just created a bigger problem, and we're just suffering for that misengineering that happened. I just think it's a mess, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. Brother Dooling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brother Willie Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. And I, of course, echo everything that's been said before. I'm totally opposed to this. But I think Text Dot is missing... First, they've never taken responsibility for all the mistakes they have made in this area that we're talking about. I'm not an engineer, but I'm a highly educated person, and it looks to me like somebody was on drugs or... You just can't have, no, this is true. No intelligent person would have designed some of those designs. And now, they're saying, well, because we did it wrong, now we have to do, and I have no confidence the new plan is going to be any more intelligent. I have several concerns. One is, what I heard Mr. Wyndham say is that they want to, they will, with this little magic program, increase the speed on the frontage road to 57 miles an hour. I live on Gladiola Lane. The only way I can get out is on 410, on the frontage. It's hard enough now, because, one, they widened the road, so they took out any view, like the fence of the house on the corner blocks the view. You can't even see the oncoming traffic. But because there's not much of it, you know, you manage to get out. I have this horrifying vision of the entire three lanes, which it doesn't need to be three, two would be quite sufficient, going 57 miles an hour, chuck a block. How in the world are we, the citizens that live here, not the pass-throughs, zipping along on the frontage road? Frontage roads are meant for frontage, not for moving traffic. If you have to move that much traffic through San Antonio, then double-deck it. But leave the frontage roads for the frontage. That's us, not them that are passing through. I agree with Mr. Bernal. I think there are a lot of, Text Dot shows no creativity. They only have one plan, one set, one way of doing things, and it's either take it or leave it. I think you could be very creative and come up with different plans. The other problem I have with just the access, even if you went with his plan and said, oh, well, you can just go up and do the turn, the U-turn, how are you going to do that with the traffic going 57 miles an hour to cross over on Military? You have to cross like four or five lanes of traffic. The whole thing is based upon a faulty premise, that somehow it's going to improve. The only thing that's going to improve is pushing more people down our throats and along Gladiola, the street I live on. Because by taking off the entrance ramp, which now kind of relieves that a little bit, except for the people that are too impatient to go through a couple signal changes to get around the HEB, you close that as an on-ramp. Guess where every single person on Jackson Keller is going to go? Right down Gladiola Lane, with children, no sidewalks. It's insanity at best. And I beg you to be more creative. And if you would like my help, I'd be happy to meet with you. I have a lot of ideas. But I'm not going to be sending out a bunch of emails, because quite frankly, I don't think you pay attention to anything anybody says, ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Christine Morgan. Christine Morgan. John Flores. Michael Catalani. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Michael Catalani. I live at 110 Wickford Way. Most of the comments I was going to make tonight, I had two pages have already been sent. But the only thing I will say is that this plan in regards to Honeysuckle Lane and the citizens of Castle Hill is totally unacceptable. It just cannot happen. And you, as our governing body, have the obligation and the responsibility to make sure those comments you hear tonight are carried forward as strongly as possible. And if it means each and every one of you going up to Austin as a whole body, not individually, and protesting and sitting at these representatives' desks, you need to do that, please. That's something that is strongly encouraged. I agree with, when listening to the report, only thing I could think about was Interstate 10 regards to Callahan, Medical, Worsbot, that area, where the frontage roads have become Main Lane highways. And this is a gimmick, pardon the expression, of Text Dot. This is how they get away with the traffic flows. If you want to talk about deaths or injuries, try to get out onto those frontage roads when you're in that area. And it's, it's pretty bad. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Jackie Ackley.
Good evening, all. I'm Jackie Ackley from 118 West Castle Lane. I really appreciate being explained to what the ideas and purposes are for these proposed changes on 410 and 281. As everyone who has spoken here before this evening of the citizenry, I am in complete agreement with them that we don't want to have Honeysuckle Lane closed to north-south traffic by residents. The write-up by Mr. McCormick is excellent and brings out all the pertinent issues. I just wanted to put a little face on them. If there is delay to fire or police of two to four minutes going to aid residents south of 410, it could make the difference between minimal injury and very serious irreparable injury or life and death. Also, just to put a face on the children and their parents who come from the south of 410 to the school, that's twice a day, every day of the school year, for the five or six years those students are pupils at that school, or even longer if they have older, younger siblings. That is a tremendous imposition, even though it's just minutes a day. It's more than once per day, and it's many every day. Since there will be access on Honeysuckle going north-south or south-north to pedestrians, if they push a button, or bicyclers, if they push a button, it suggests to me that maybe the number of cars that go north-south there could be looked at and the lights timed, as was brought up by Mr. Strebe, or so previously, such that although the access road could have the majority of the time, the timing of the lights for north-south Honeysuckle traffic could be in proportion to the number of cars that need to make that trail. So instead of closing it, maybe alter the light ratio. So those were my ideas, and the ideas of my husband's. I really appreciate the support of our congresspeople and hope that they are successful in keeping Honeysuckle open. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Bill Barker.
Mayor and Council, Bill Barker. I live at 121 Castle Hills Drive. I've been in transportation planning all my life. In fact, Jeremy and I used to work for the same firm in Dallas, and Brian Vanderbal, he worked for the same firm as well. Text Dot has a context-sensitive design policy which fits this case. It's a policy that says, you know, there's more to life than just traffic. And we need to look at, like, dividing the city of Castle Hills in two. We need to look at the fact that San Antonio's been called out by the Federal Highway Administration, is having too many pedestrian accidents. And San Pedro at 410 has been just called out by the city of San Antonio as having too many pedestrian accidents. It's not being addressed here. And the city of San Antonio has also pointed out that San Pedro 410 is the largest concentration of population and employment in the city, bigger than the medical center, bigger than downtown San Antonio. And that area, this area, is going to continue to grow into the future. And I think it's time to step back and look at, okay, how do you serve? How do you access the largest concentration of population and employment in the city? You just can't put Band-Aids on things. You need to kind of rethink the whole thing. And that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Robbie Casey.
Hello, I'm Robbie Casey. I live at 144 Castle Hills Drive. And thank you, Mayor and Council, and for all of your time. I want to say, I'd like to say a lot, but I think everyone has already said a lot of what I was going to say. But the main thing is that we do not want a divided city. And that's exactly what it would do. I live on the south side of Castle Hills. And when we moved there 16, 17 years ago, what our consideration was, okay, how long is it going to take us to get to medical centers, should we need to go there? How long is it going to take us to get to the City Hall? Or to, how long is it going to take the fire department to get to our house? Or how long is it going to take us to get to the airport? Well, we don't want that all taken away from us. We've invested our money. We've invested our livelihood and enjoy living in Castle Hills. Castle Hills is already landlocked, and we want to see some growth in Castle Hills. And dividing it would only just eliminate that. So we're looking at what we can do for the betterment of the citizens and for the betterment of Castle Hills, and to bring in retail and bring in more happy people, not to be blocked by some block that's put up there, another cement block. So first, I'm not going to say anymore other than we cannot have a divided city. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Guy Strithorn. Stripman. Hi, Guy. How are you?
Good, thanks. Real quick, so there's three crashes per day. Guy Stedham, I'm at 303 Wickford Way. I've lived in Castle Hills since 1972. There's three crashes per day? How many cars? No, that drive the whole day on 410? Right, that's nothing. It's still very minimal. And that was created by you guys, the 281 coming on the 410. But here's the thing. Yes, it would divide the city, but this is the only street that the city of Castle Hills owns that connects the two sides, correct? So when we want to vote, and let's say it's Election Day, and the turnaround is shut down, what do we do? We drive over here to vote. So that's disparate impact. And that's a big issue. So unless you can guarantee me the right to get in my car, do you walk to vote where you vote? Do you walk or do you drive? Okay, well, so do we. So if I don't have guaranteed access to my elected officials on Election Day on a street that we own in this city, that's illegal, sir. So there's plenty of judges and lawyers who live in this city, and right now, it's all friendly and fun and give us all your statistics. But disparate impact is a term that I think that maybe Text Dot should do. Also, when did all this start? Was that when Bruce Bug in Bank of San Antonio started?
Hi.
So he can be dropped off right at his front door?
I don't know that, so I, but thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Okay, Quentin Baker. Quentin, thank you again for everything you did with the flags and everything.
Jan, it's the thanks. All hers.
Last I heard, this community property state, so...
Quentin Baker, 304 Foxall. I won't repeat all the comments heard earlier. I'll second the motion, or tenth it, or twelfth it, whatever I am. I am opposed to the plan. Let me bring up some new points. One in particular deals with emergency services. Remember, our city is here to serve the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. Emergency services has been brought up as the one aspect so far that completely neglects the safety of citizens trying to go and get their own emergency services. I lived on Honeysuck, on Twin Leaf for five years. Jan and I bought our first house on Twin Leaf. And that Honeysuckle intersection is key to the people, particularly on the south side, for rapid egress from that neighborhood to get to emergency services. Think about taking one of your kids to the emergency room, okay? So just emergency services alone isn't the whole picture. Think of all the citizens who have their own emergency needs and have access, and you need to take care of them, all right? All right, the movable bollards, that's an active system, and every active system has a failure rate. At some point, the bollards are going to fail, which means we're cut off, right? Until Text Dot can come out and repair them. I am opposed to any type of active system when you're dependent on it for emergency services. Plain and simple, okay? The U-turns on the access road, that was brought up by a couple of speakers before me. We're going to have 55 mile an hour traffic. Go look at the access road on I-10 by Medical and Callahan and try and pull out of one of those side roads where people are zipping along at 55-plus. Now imagine having to cross those lanes to make your U-turn at Northwest Military West Avenue. So we're inviting weaving now across two lanes to have to make your U-turn to swing around and go the opposite direction. We're creating a new safety problem for our citizens, all right? Now, the last point, I understand that the city actually owns Honeysuckle. So I'd ask council to specifically look into our legal rights as a city. I think, I suspect, that our city has the decision authority over what happens with Honeysuckle, that the decision rests with you, not with Text Dot. And I'd really like you to explore that.
Thank you, Quentin. Okay, Neff Hudson.
All right, believe it or not, we finished one page, only eight more to go. What? That's eight, got eight more to go. I would want to remind everybody, in case you do have to leave early, that to please email me, and what I'll do is I'll make sure that you get the survey that I'm going to send out, and not only that, I'm going to include a link to Skip's presentation that he didn't get to give, and also a link back to the city on these proceedings here, which you can go frame by frame, if you would like to do such. Okay, next is, and thank you very much for those who have already emailed, I'm getting a mailbox full. Okay, Kevin Chevron Chevris, Twinleaf? James Hayo?
That's the sign-in sheet.
Okay, but there were some people who didn't understand this was a sign-in sheet. I'd rather go down a mall than to miss someone who wanted to speak. Lee Hayo, James Hayo, Cordell Reinhardt, Sherry Jaquil, you've already spoke, yes, you already spoke, Patsy Payton, Tom Payton, Louis Navarro. Mary Ellen Melville, Tom Melville, okay, Moretta Smith, okay, Van Smith, Emily Laurie, David Nannas? Okay, good. Jim and Marcy File, Carlos Sinra, Alex and Pam Burgers, Ginger, do you want to say Kathy Tarkington? Irish Bremen, Lisa Evans, Sherry French? Sherry, you okay? Okay. All right, you're probably right here, so let's do this. Let's start on this side of the room, and anybody who would like to speak on this, George, you're on there, you're, I think, on the seventh page, but go ahead. You got to go there early, oh, good. Thanks for waiting it out, George. George and I went to the first grade together, believe it or not.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, George Booth, 124 Dogwood. Yes, I've lived here most of my life since 60, when I could ride my tricycle on La Cale Selma, so I've seen a lot of changes in Castle Hills. I don't believe that shutting off Honeysuckle is a very good idea. The city already feels separated between the north and the south, this will only divide us more. I don't really see that with a light at West Avenue, another light at Blanco, how that's going to alleviate any trouble or traffic along San Pedro as far as the problem that they're trying to address. Maybe they should put an on-ramp just after West Avenue, going eastbound and onto 410, maybe that'll solve the problem and keep Honeysuckle open. If they change the speed limit on the access road, I'm concerned about the emergency vehicles trying to cross, they're liable to get into a wreck, and so I think it's a really bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Yes, sir. Come on up.
I'm another George.
I'm sorry, if you.
George Mary, I want to talk about the quality of life for just a moment here. A lot of people don't know my family, there's a lot of us here, between myself, my family, my sisters, my wife, her family, we own 12 homes in South Castle Hills. We have, we're nine houses on Town View. I own a house on one Flintstone, Flintstone Court, and I now live on 105 Town View. The beauty about this is, I know the difference, just Antler alone is a disaster. For me to move from Flint, to come from Flintstone to 105 was a big deal for us because it put me in the middle of my family. That part of Castle Hill was already divided by Antler. It is divided by Antler, to say the least. I'm not so concerned about crossing under Honeysuckle to get on 410 to go west. I'm concerned about the thousands of cars that are going to figure it out, that they can cut through Castle Hills to get to Blanco, that they can take Honeysuckle and tear it apart. Just, it's the reverse effect that concerns me. Gladiola's a perfect example, and this is a lot going on, but I have to tell you one little sad story. I say it's sad because it could potentially be sad. The newest member of our community is my daughter. She just moved on Squires Row ninety days ago. That's the house that we've been getting ready, and lights, and doing whatever it takes, and the fact of the matter is, the sad story is her husband was accidentally killed in a hunting accident last year, and left us with a one-year-old and a four-year-old. And it took me, it took me six months to convince her to move into probably the greatest neighborhood in the entire, there can't be a better, a perfect scenario. We have access to every part of the city that we need to go, but the biggest thing was the quality of life and the safety factor. She lives on Squires Row, 103 Squires Row, and this is the beginning of their life. And let me tell you something, I'm 62 years old, and I can tell you that the average age in our neighborhood is really up there somewhere with me, but the biggest thing about it is there, finally, there's youth coming in? I mean, this is a one-year-old baby moving into their new home, and I'm concerned that the quality of life is probably going to be challenged a little bit, because she can't go anywhere, it's her and the two babies. And I'm a little concerned of the, how can we, if this happens, if it's inevitable, how can we protect our neighborhood from the invasion of people that have figured out to get to Blanco and the back way somehow that'll tear that neighborhood apart? Squires Row's a perfect example, Honeysuckle for sure. Antler's already an issue cutting across from San Antonio to San Antonio. So, I just want us to be careful about that, because we're just starting to bring a whole new quality of life. We're going to have to take our Christmas lights down so we don't attract any more attention to the thousands of cars that are going to want to go through what is becoming a beautiful, and you can tell, it's just so proud to be a part of this. I'm worried about everything coming, and then I haven't even thought about the people going back the other way. It's, anyway, I wanted to get that off my chest.
Thank you, George. I appreciate it. You know.
I wanted to say, I'm the Mary, I'm the Mary name, my wife is the Hoyou family.
I know who they are.
My sister's the bourgeois, they have done three more houses, it's just all of it.
You know, George, to kind of lighten the subject a little bit, Frank, get his name, I think between him and the Unamars, he could win an election. No. They also own a number of homes here. Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Ronan, I live at 102 North Manton. This question is for TXDOT. Was there a negative impact report done on this study that you showed us today, or this presentation? A negative impact, like how is it going to affect us negatively? Is it going to back up? I mean, is there all kinds of other things that are going to happen here instead of down there when this is over with? Was there a study done? The negative impact study? Or just the study for, you know, what do you call it? I'm sorry, I'm not very good with the terms. Okay. Okay, you didn't bring the negatives with you today? Well, I mean, I'm sorry. And the other thing is, how about, not that it's pleasant to look at, but double-decorating 410? You already took the land from us once. Use the land you got, raise it.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Take care. Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anybody else on the side over there? Okay, hang on, hang on just a second, all right? Yes, sir, hang on, we're on this side. One second, I'll get you. Roger? Go ahead. Roger is a pastor in our city, which is affected by.
Yes, my name is Roger Poopardi, pastor at Wayside Chapel, which is at 1705 Northwest Loop 410. I'm not sure how we were left off of your stakeholder list, because we have over 2,000 people and over 50 employees, so I'd love to set up a meeting to be included in that. We have done all that we can to try to mitigate the effect of our church on the community around us, and one of the things we've done is voluntarily closed two of our entrance and exit ramps onto the frontage road and things, because we know the traffic impact of cars and various things. What y'all are proposing, you know, I heard somebody report that the frontage road would go up to over 50 miles an hour. I don't remember, that's what y'all said, but I do know it will increase the amount of traffic as well as the speed of traffic. And when we're trying to get 2,000 people out of our church on a Sunday morning, it's not just Sunday morning, we have, every evening, we have activities with three to 800 people every night coming and going from the property. And so, from what I saw, what it's going to force us to do is essentially push all of the traffic through the neighborhood behind us, which is what we have tried to eliminate. And on Sundays, we run three shuttles on a continuous basis to two off-site lots. That's going to affect the pattern of our shuttle buses that are running, it's going to, again, push traffic into the neighborhood behind us that we've worked really hard to eliminate. So, I think everybody here, you know, I know y'all are familiar with the term NIMBY, not in my backyard, and I know that everybody does want to see some improvement of the traffic flow, and the things y'all have proposed of the major flyovers, I think are things that can certainly be done to help with some of the problem without affecting the honeysuckle area. We'd love to try to find out what we can do to help y'all with the problem, but it will have an extreme impact on our particular church as well as this particular community. And I don't know what TXDOT is prepared to do to help us if you eliminate us down to one exit, essentially to move 2,000 to 3,000 people at a time out, that's going to become catastrophic. So, we're going to need to sit down and have some kind of a stakeholder conversation at y'all's convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
I'm John Hoyou, I live at 112 Town View, I've been there for eight years. There was a gentleman over here that recommended the double-decorated 410, that would relieve the congestion, and we've done it in downtown San Antonio on I-35 and I-10, they've done it in Austin, it's helped a lot. It's, I agree with everybody else, it's ridiculous to cut off honeysuckle. One thing I'd like to point out is, or ask, are you planning on having the funds available to do all this project at the start of this project? Okay, because are you aware of what they did for 20 years on Interstate 10? It was, let's get the funds again, we built 100 yards, let's get more funds together, we build another 100 yards. They said it was going to take two years to repave Blanco Road, it took five and a half. So, the construction that everybody's going to have to deal with going around this, and the congestion, everything, you know, hopefully you have an alternative plan to leave honeysuckle open, but, you know, everybody agrees you got to do something about the congestion on 410 to relieve the accidents. But also, I think that if you policed Interstate 410 and got people to slow down, that would relieve some of the accidents. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last one on this side. Pete? If you want to say anything? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. My name is Francisco Garcia, I live on 115 Sheffield. I just wanted to make a few points. First, I wanted to thank you for coming out and giving the presentation. I also am opposed to closing honeysuckle. I want to give some ideas. The first one is, when you gave your presentation, the very first thing you started with was you wanted to add a second lane to the San Pedro exit, and it kind of gave the flavor that you were prioritizing that exit to San Pedro, and that started the chain reaction that led all the way back to closing honeysuckle. So, if that was your intent, then that was good, but if not, you might want to consider how you present the information. Second thing is, it seems like this is a solution for peak rush hour, and you're penalizing the city for 24/7 for the entire time. Sunday morning at 2:00 in the morning, honeysuckle's still going to be closed, but there's not really going to be a traffic need for that. The third thing is, when you're talking about prioritizing Northwest Military to get on to 410, I don't know if you considered using a metering device. This is what the city did on IH10, where they would put a stoplight, and traffic would have to wait, and so then you would control the amount of traffic that was going in, trying to weave in with the San Pedro exits. I think that's a good consideration, because intelligent drivers, which most everybody in Castle Hills is, would realize, you know what, I can use Wurzbach Expressway, Wurzbach Parkway, to get to where I need to go, instead of sitting in that metering solution, and that's relatively an expensive solution for you. And then, let's see, the last thing is, your logic kind of breaks down, because you talk about if we do nothing by 2020, but I think the consensus here is, you could not get this solution in place by 2020. So, really, you need to move the event horizon to maybe 2024 or 2022 and say, if we're, that's my time, right? Okay. So, and then, when you do all these fixes, how long will it be before we're back to the 2020? So, you just talk about growth to a limited extent. The city's going to pay an amazing price for that, and then we're still going to have another bottleneck that's coming in the future. Thank you, Mayor Howell.
Thank you very much for your comments. The gentleman back there with, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, back there on the table? Yes, sir?
I'm Joe Klein from Castle Hills and Town View, and I had a couple of things. One is, closing the westbound entrance onto 410 is going to cause all sorts of additional traffic on the frontage road. That goes across Gladiola. Gladiola is on the west side of the part of the city I'm in, and that's where we turn to get on to eastbound, and also to get on westbound from there. And that's going to make it a very dangerous intersection at the speed you're talking about. It's already pretty hazardous. Another thing, I agree with all the things about closing the street underneath the freeway, but that really causes Castle Hills to no longer be Castle Hills. It'll be North Castle Hills and South Castle Hills. There's literally no way to get back and forth between the two sides, and that's a psychological separation. And the other part of it is kind of pretty significant, I think. TXDOT is taking its problems with the freeway and the frontage road, and it's dumping on our community. We're going to get the extra traffic. Who's going to do the studies when we have accidents in our section from all this additional internal traffic that we're going to have? And, you know, I think you, that takes up, the Castle Hills Police Department have to do the traffic studies? Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay. We're through with that side. Let's start, if you don't mind, hang on just a second, right? Todd, give me one minute, okay? She's been, yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, I don't, I need glasses, so. Oh, Ms. Evans, yes, how are you?
I'm Lisa Evans. I'm at two oh seven Hurwick. So I may be one of the only ones who has children who go to Castle Hills. So my kids, my daughter is in the second grade, she's eight. They've been riding their bikes to school. We go across Honeysuckle. You know, we're trying to promote fitness and health. We're trying to take our kids across. And I believe that we can push a button, but I don't believe that people who have been conditioned that they can zip through are going to have any cognition that at seven o'clock in the morning, a family of three or four people may be riding their bikes across. I feel very strongly that this is not going to be a long-term solution. I mean, I've lived in Castle Hills in our house since I was eleven, so I am a resident since nineteen ninety-one. And I will just tell you that, you know, trying to increase the community has just gone dramatically up. So in the time that I've been here, we have the commons, we have events, people are walking in the community. We want to promote that. We want to get to that point. And this is not, this is not the answer. I mean, this is such a small little community, and this road is critical to keeping us as one. I know everybody said it, but with my kids trying to get to that school, I've got another one who's going there next year. You know, we are, that is where we go. That's the commons. We'd like to have a playground. We want to really build up this community and attract more young people to the neighborhood, and I just don't think that this is the best long-term solution.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Councilman Paul, hang on, Todd, you're next.
Just one thing. There was some concern because somebody put out there that there were going to be cards here to show your displeasure, displeasing of this particular event or the, you know, closing our street. So I was hoping there's going to be more people here, but just for the benefit of our guest, if there's anybody, anybody in the crowd that is for closing Honeysuckle, please stand up.
Okay. Don't worry, I own, nobody saw you.
Thank you.
We realized you had to go to the restroom, so, you know. Okay. Thanks, thanks, Frank. That was a good one.
I'm Todd Herman. I live at one fourteen North Manton Lane. Obviously, I'm against the closure of Honeysuckle Lane. I don't envy either of your guys' position being here tonight, so I appreciate you coming with respect to that. You know, as part of my profession, I get to deal with government contractors, defense contractors, things of that nature. So I feel that y'all picking Castle Hills as a subject of a street closure is probably, in my opinion, low-hanging fruit in terms of cost analysis. I think you guys need to definitely bring your A-game when you're coming to a city like Castle Hills because the residents are very involved and you kind of picked a main artery of the city to attack. And that's why we're having the turnout that we did tonight, and, you know, I think that's why a lot of people are against the Honeysuckle closure. Just as a side thought, again, I echo everything, all the sentiments that everyone else has said during this discourse. Have you guys possibly thought about upping the game and doing an underpass at Honeysuckle? Just a total thought, you know, shot off the bow, but have you guys looked at that as in terms of cost or feasibility? Okay, just so you kind of kill two birds with one's, nobody wants this anyway, but I'm just spitballing here. But I will see the rest of my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else on that side? I own?
Hi, my name's Ione McGinty. I live at three-four-four Town View in the house that I've grown up in, so I've lived here most of my life. I think it's an absolutely absurd idea. I would have to agree with Brother Dooley that whoever planned it previously must have been on drugs or just lacked common sense. The Honeysuckle exit was taken away. The whole freeway was reconfigured and redone fifteen years ago, and now, guess what? Y'all did a bad job and y'all are trying to fix your mistakes. But we should not have to pay for that. I think there's other solutions besides these multimillion-dollar ideas. Two things that I have noticed, that the people are creatures of habit. And I think that is one reason for all the wrecks on four-ten. People's exit, like the San Pedro exit, you don't know, but that's where you exit to go to John Smallsburger. And then going westbound on four-ten, the I ten east and west, it used to be, you know, two separate exits. Now it's go one exit and then you split off. I think there's a lot of confusion on four-ten because of what y'all did years ago. And I think San Antonio is short approximately two thousand officers, and I think that's a huge reason for all these wrecks. People, the driving has changed dramatically in San Antonio the last fifteen years. And I think if there, if we focused on that, if TXDOT got with San Antonio to have more police to build that up, that our roads would be safer. But closing the main artery of Castle Hills and the speed going up, we don't want to pay for the mistakes that were made years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ione. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything? Bernard? I don't know if you just came in or not, but I said between your family and the other one, I think you could win an election.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for being here. I live at one-one-five East Castle Lane. My name's Bernard Yettermeyer, and I'm opposed to this closure. I think we need more accessibility, not less. So on Honeysuckle, we just, we just got a, the staff and council just got a crosswalk between the school and the commons, and I want more crosswalks. And especially the, TXDOT just repaved the frontage road on four-ten, and they forgot to put the crosswalks back in. Blanco, West Avenue, and Honeysuckle. So I would like to see those back in and more lights under the bridges. I mean, so I'm going the other way, but you're here, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Bernard. Gentlemen? I think that's everybody who wanted to speak. I want to thank y'all for, oh, okay, oh, Leslie. That, I'm sorry. I apologize. Hang on, let me make sure, let me make sure you're signed up. Leslie, you can speak anytime. Go ahead.
Okay, well, just not to take too long, of course, I agree with everything that's been said here, and I've already taken all the potshots I need to take at TXDOT. But I do want to say one thing. One of the things I've always appreciated is public officials who are accessible. The gentleman that I've been dealing with at TXDOT, Clayton Rips, has been amazingly accessible. He has called back, he has emailed, and I think that he's an absolute gem as a public servant, and I would like to compliment him for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Oh, he happens to be here with us tonight. Okay, good, good. I was going to say, thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. And I think there's only one thing worse than being a TXDOT representative tonight, and that's what's being a Castle Hills mayor. But I will say this, they may be mean, but they're ours. So, no, I really want to thank y'all for coming out and listening to the folks here. And as you can see, we're a very highly spirited neighborhood. We get involved. Even the people who have been around as long as Pete and I went to the first grade together, George. I mean, there's a lot of people who have lived here their whole lives, and we truly care about this city. And that isn't a political statement because I'm not running again, okay, for this position. So somebody else will get to have the fun. But thank you, and say a few words if you would like, and...
I really want to thank you for setting this up and allowing us to have the dialogue with you, council, as well as the citizens here in Castle Hills. I want to assure everybody that this will be part of our analysis. When we decide in finality what will be proposed, this is a big part of it. It really is. I don't want you to take this for granted or think that we take it for granted. I did want to correct a couple of things. I don't want to come across as defensive at all of our plan at all. But I did want to correct two quick things that were said early on. And it's just part of, just things I heard, and I thought, well, it was said a couple of times. I don't want everybody to leave tonight thinking, I guess half the people did already, but... The bollards that were proposed, they would just be driven over by the fire truck, and they would just push them over immediately. It wouldn't be something that would take any time at all. He would just drive right over. So, you know, that is, that is a fact. The, not saying we would, you know, we're definitely going to do it, but if we did, that's the type of installation that would be there. So you wouldn't really lose any time. And the fifty-seven miles an hour, that was, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, but that's the main lanes, right? Not the frontage road. The frontage road speeds would still be posted at whatever they're at today, forty-five, I think, so. That's all I really have to say. Thank you again for having us. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to remind everyone, we have a couple more agenda items? Oh, yeah, I know, hang on. I do want to remind everyone before they take off to please email me. I'm going to be sending a survey out and to get, and there will be an area for comments there. We're going to start left to right and go, Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments to make here?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I wanted to thank Representative Bernal and Senator Menendez for taking the time to listen about everything that's going on. I also wanted to thank the TXDOT folks. I understand that they aren't out to get Castle Hills. It's just kind of the position that we're in, but I appreciate them being willing to listen and take back the feedback. You know, I would like to add as well that walkability is important in the city, and by proceeding with this project, we would really be doing a disservice in that regard. But I look forward to continuing working with TXDOT.
Everyone, hang on just a second. Let's, hang on just a second. Go ahead, Councilman Trevino, everyone. Let's take a thirty-second here. Okay, Representative Scott?
I don't think there's much I can say that wouldn't parrot what's already been said here tonight. My huge concern is the safety of the citizens as far as emergency services, in particular our pedestrians and our walkability. The one point I would like to talk about real quick again, and I already heard it said, is that they're saying, sure, keep your pedestrians going through, but, you know, no traffic. And the issue I have with that is, I went back and reread TXDOT's own studies, one published this June, on distracted drivers. They say one out of every five drivers on the road these days is distracted. This is a study that TXDOT themselves performed. One out of every five drivers is distracted by something going on in their vehicle. So if you have constant traffic going on the frontage road through Honeysuckle, and they have been trained that it's closed, they can go through there, that light is going to be green all the time, and they're distracted, one of every five cars is distracted. And I'm standing there with my two children, and we are crossing to go see our friends that live on the south side of the city, and we get the red light to stop the traffic and a green light for us to go. And those cars that are used to just flying right on through, they don't recognize that red light is red because they've been going through on green every single day. They don't recognize that. They're distracted, one out of five. TXDOT's numbers, one out of five. And when is that, is that what it's going to take before TXDOT realizes that, hey, we were right in the first place? I certainly hope not. So be safe out there, guys. When I read that study, it really startled me. So let's try to get that number better. Let's have less distracted drivers. But let's not close Honeysuckle. Let's try and work with TXDOT to keep it open and not have these issues arise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Scott. Alderman McLenn?
I thank everybody for coming, TXDOT, all the state representatives for coming and taking time out of an evening on this important issue. I echo everybody's concerns. I, too, like Ms. Evans that spoke, have children at Castle Hills, and we ride our bicycles to school. And so I share Mrs. Scott's concerns about the distracted driver that doesn't see red on a morning. I also have other serious safety issues about four-ten being a hazmat traffic route through the city and what closing Honeysuckle does for our city to evacuate and have multiple evacuation routes. Northwest Military, the U-turn that's being proposed off of that is also an interesting item because I see that coming in right where we already have a blind merge spot right before you get to Wayside Chapel, where there's also the added benefit of going on to the one little circle street that's right there. So they're adding additional traffic to an already precarious situation that I avoid almost at all costs. I don't like it because the whole side of, left side of my car is blind in that particular spot. I appreciate everybody's unique comments. If you have specific, everyone has specific backgrounds that they come from, so everyone is seeing little nuances. I've got half a page of notes with new ideas that different people said that I hadn't thought about that are a tweak on something that I had heard from someone else. So I appreciate everyone's unique and very constructive comments on this issue because I think that will help us make our case to TXDOT.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments or...
Yes, a couple of quick things because everybody's pretty much said it all. As I mentioned in the first meeting, we're responsible for the safety and welfare of the city, so we need to do what we can that's in the best of the city's interest. One of the things we ran into when bases wanted to come to the town is they did a traffic study, but they forgot to take into consideration the peripheral neighborhoods around it. And you cut off Honeysuckle, then all that traffic that's trying to get to school and do all the things, Lemonwood, Cremaria, we cause other issues and other problems. You know, I could go on, I could, I'll be a little nicer than maybe a couple of the people because I'm sitting up here. But they created that mess, and there's no reason to mess us up to fix their mess. And the mess, it's very simple. I go to the airport a lot, and coming out of the airport, I make sure I get as far off to the left as I can because you just cannot run the risk of that overpass going off to San Pedro. It's just, it's a mess. And anybody in their, excuse me, anybody still here from TXDOT? In their right mind, common sense was not so common there. And so, you know, I ask and suggest that the mayor have our city manager, because that position is stable no matter who sits there, that form a committee that will be ongoing. The city manager, I'd like to see the pastor involved. And Councilman Trevino has already engaged, and because of our Open Meetings Act, we only can have a couple of representatives or a couple of council people involved at the same time. But I'd like to see a committee set up, and I'd like that committee, through our city manager, to contact TXDOT and say that any meeting that they have dealing with this situation, that we're involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments for the gentleman?
Well, Mr. Brennan isn't here, but it seems to me that we have a fundamental legal question. If we own Honeysuckle, we control it. And if we control it, this couldn't happen. So I think we ought to, that's the key, because I don't know whether TXDOT's going to listen or do anything or not. But the key is, if we own the street, do we have, if we have sovereignty over the street, can we control it? And if we can control it, we can stop this. But that, to me, is going to be the linchpin of this issue.
We can control the street if we own it, which I think we might, but the problem is the, I mean, you're right. We need to find out these legal issues. The problem is, is the access roads that lead to and from it, they still have control on what they want to do on how they flow traffic. Thank you.
Donovan, thanks, be sure and thank the senator for sending you this evening. Anita?
No, not Anita. Yeah, Anita, sorry. Sure.
The reason we know that we own the street is that we pay the light bill on the access road and on Honeysuckle, and it's not cheap. Texas does not pay the light. We do.
That's a good point. Okay. So we're going, we're going to refer it back to the two items that we tabled in the earlier meeting, and we should, they were. Okay.
Mayor, that was item C from the consent agenda and item one on the discussion item.
Okay, let's take one minute, okay? And just a quick break. Oh, excuse me, two maybe. No more than two, okay? D's approved. We still got C to go, and we still got, oh, it, it passed with, instead of forty-three. It passed with. Yeah, but it, to exceed twenty-seven thousand, not forty-three. D, yeah, that's twenty, not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, and.
He said, what you got was a working copy. Cartograph numbers never really changed.
I told him to be damn careful with that.
I'm going to blast him if he does.
I told him to be damn careful with that and don't, do not, do not.
I'm going to, I'm going to let him talk. If he wants to know what we passed, I'll show what we passed. Now that we have this lawsuit against us with the.
Covenant Church.
Covenant Church, we may have to disgorge ourselves for about a hundred thousand dollars.
Don't worry. I mean, I.
I just wanted you to know because this was this conversation I had on everyone, twenty-nine. Those were his exact words. It's the same crap he did. I don't know why he did that. I don't know why he did it. And I've gone back to most of the members that have never seen it before. Never seen, never seen. Like Bob Jones, he'd never seen. I have never seen. Riley'd never seen. So, is he, is this answer, you know?
He's out.
Well, he, he.
Five days.
He told we wanted to stay on until. He's definitely going to be done.
No, I got his record. He's got ten, he's got eight more days.
Only person who's changing, though, is. To put in something, and she said, oh, well, he did it because he thought that's what the numbers, the committee people would have wanted to work with. He just come ahead, you know, I'm glad. I will tell you something I haven't told you. I was worried about him, and I didn't remember the May meeting. I'd had no notes or. Afterwards, I went and had Dr. Christopher Pepper. I had a test on dementia and Alzheimer's. I'm not serious. Because I had no memory of it. In that meeting, he brought out, this is a forty-five with a sliver of twenty-eight, and he said that sliver was in front of my street.
And that never took place?
Huh?
That never took place?
What now?
The twenty?
No, he said, he came in that May meeting because I had to ask him to explain.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's a sliver that's twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's how he tried.
It's in front of my house. Yeah. I hope all he's going to thought about is what we've done, what we can afford to do. If he doesn't, I'm not going to bring anything up.
All right. Thanks for.
He wants it passed because he can get into a heck of a lot of problems.
Probably neither one. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's been two minutes. Let's get back to order here. If you have private conversations you want to carry on, if y'all could find your way to a quiet place. We'll be glad to accommodate that quiet place in the lobby. Thanks again, Anita. Bye-bye. So long, Donovan. Tell them hello. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, here we go. We're bringing up the item on the agenda which was item C. It's approval of revolution, resolution number R two oh one seven dash one-two dash twelve C, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase agreement for a ladder fire truck from Sidens Martin for the purchase of one million fifty thousand dollars, not to exceed one million ninety-four thousand dollars, and that would include total financing. We've been saving for this over the years, and we came across a deal, if you will, somebody who had one built, and then they backed out of the agreement. This truck, which Chief Dover will explain because he's more, I'm a salesman, not a truck engineer. So he will explain why we even considered doing this at this time. And what it would involve as far as financing is concerned and how it affects our budget in the future from what we are already saving. Miss, Mr. Dover?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is a heavy-duty, one-hundred-foot aerial platform truck that was built by Pierce. It is typically is specked out the way it was. If we were to purchase this vehicle brand-new, it lists for one-point-two-five million. They've reduced the price by a considerable amount, two-hundred thousand dollars. It has approximately twelve thousand miles on it. It is a demo unit that is actually toured, I believe, the east coast that they use to showcase the newest technology and, and different things. This is a, a heavy-duty platform. What I had originally proposed when we were going to build the truck would have been more what would be considered a medium-duty platform. Some of the problems that we would face if building, the biggest one is being the amount of time that it would take for the truck to be built before we could take delivery. We're looking at a twelve-to-thirteen-month production time. This truck is readily available now. It could be in our city in approximately a month, month and a half, is what they're telling me. It will come with the same warranties that a brand-new truck would. A one-year warranty from the manufacturer. There is, similar to other, such as your, your personal vehicles, there is a dealership here in San Antonio with a service center that's available to service the vehicle, the truck. We currently are, engine that we have is made by the same manufacturer. This truck features two-hundred, two, I'm sorry, a two-thousand GPM pump, three-hundred gallon tank, a thousand-pound tip load at the platform that reduces to five-hundred pounds when flowing water. It features dual monitors at the platform as well as dual two-and-a-half-inch discharges. In other words, we could hook up two hoses at the platform, a hundred feet in the air if need be, and extend hoses off of there to fight fire. It has a ten-kilowatt generator. It additionally has storage on the ladder itself for one-hundred foot of inch-and-three-quarter hose, which is our main attack line that we typically use to fight fires. There is a forty-five hundred PSI of breathing air that is on the truck itself in the event that firefighters were there for an extended operation and they were going to be in the platform for an extended period with smoke. Once our air bottles that we typically wear on our air packs, they typically last thirty to forty-five minutes, depending on usage. They could actually use the breathing air that is on the truck without having to come down, and they could stay up there for an extended period of time. In addition to that, there is Stokes, Stokes basket storage on the side of the ladder truck. This is a specialized rescue litter that we use to bring people down from elevated areas as well as up from lower areas. You see them on TV all the time when they're rescuing somebody off the side of the mountain. We don't just use them for that, of course. We'd use them in the event that we had to bring somebody down from one of the buildings and, and things of this nature. This does have a larger working area on the platform itself. It could accommodate three to four firefighters or one to two firefighters plus two to three victims in the event of a rescue. The Wedgwood Fire, I bring this up again because our current ladder is seventy-five foot tall, and it has no platform on it. Platform thirty-two from San Antonio, actually, they rescued the two occupants of the penthouse on the eleventh floor of the Wedgwood with their ladder that is very, very similar to this one. It's manufactured by the same manufacturer, same platform height, same platform design. It's just slightly different in that the cab is a little bit different than this would be. But they actually removed the two victims from the eleventh floor with that ladder. This, to me, would be a safety concern. I would much rather take persons, especially an elderly patient or occupant, in the event that they have mobility issues. I'd rather put them in a platform and be able to lower them safely to the ground as opposed to trying to assist them down a hundred-foot ladder. In addition to that, in, we're doing firefighter, firefighter operations from the elevated platform. It's much safer for firefighters to operate from the platform as opposed to strapping in and standing on the ladder itself the way we do it now. There's a few different options. One financed through PNC, which is Pierce's. Pierce is owned by Oshkosh, who manufactures heavy equipment, military vehicles, and different things. PNC has offered the city, with the five-hundred thousand dollars that we have saved for a new truck purchase, placing that down and financing the remaining balance of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the first payment would be due after the one-year lease commencement. If we so chose a five-year lease option, lease purchase option, five years, five annual payments, at a hundred-and-eighteen thousand, seven-hundred, ninety-three dollars and thirty-four cents, at two-point-six-two percent interest, would total five-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. We have the option to go seven years, which would be seven annual payments of eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars at a two-point-seven-eight percent interest rate, equalling six-hundred-and-twelve thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars total paid after purchase. Or ten years at ten year, and, excuse me, ten annual payments of sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twelve dollars and thirty-six cents at two-point-nine-five percent interest, equalling six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. This truck is available for a very limited time. Something that I was concerned with, even waiting this far out to the council meeting tonight, was it's basically whoever shows up first with money in hand takes the truck. Unfortunately, there's only one truck in this price range. They do have some more trucks closer to that one-point-two-five million price range. But in my opinion, this is, this is a steal for the options that are available on this truck and the capabilities that it, it can provide for this city. I don't mean to, to push council into any direction. However, I mean, we're kind of limited on the amount of time that we have to act on this. There is another fire department in Pennsylvania that is actively pursuing purchasing this truck as well. So we're kind of in a race, so to speak.
Sir Dover, okay, with that said, what is, what is, and I'm just, I'm just asking, just to remind counsel, what is the amount of money we put aside a, a year in order to purchase that truck? Do you know?
We put aside fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new apparatus.
And what?
Which would be either a ladder truck or engine.
Under the current, current budget amount?
Currently.
Current budget that we're working with today. So we're putting aside six thousand dollars a month, roughly.
I'd have to take a calculator out. My math isn't that good, but.
I had a cold. I have a cold, okay, so, you know. How much? Okay, forty-two hundred. Okay, and what is the payment now for seven years?
Seven years, the payment would be eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars for seven years at two-point-seven-eight percent.
What about ten?
Ten would be sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twelve dollars, thirty-six cents at two-point-nine-five percent interest.
Who finances these things?
This is financed through PNC, which is a bank that works through, it was actually owned by Oshkosh Capital. They have since become their own bank. This is who Pierce recommends. The financing, in my opinion, seems.
So in other words, just to break even on a ten-year, we would have to come up with fourteen thousand in the budget for next year? I mean, for, for ten years past what we're already putting in today?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, let's do this. Let's get a motion and a second, and then we'll go into the discussion. And do I have a motion to move this forward? Some moved second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Let's start on the right side. Douglas?
How long can we keep a truck and keep our credibility, accreditation, excuse me?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Have you looked into what a truck, and this truck is discounted because it's a demo. Have you looked into what the cost of a truck that was five years old would cost?
No, sir, I have not.
Are they on the market?
There are some. I would caution against oftentimes purchasing a vehicle that once it gets to be about the five-to-ten-year age. Oftentimes, you're buying somebody else's problem.
If it doesn't have a warranty, that's true.
That, yes, sir. It, it would, we would certainly have to entertain if there would be a warranty available through whoever might be selling the apparatus. Oftentimes, it's through a, a broker that is selling it on behalf of a fire company or another city when they're selling it.
That's the same knowledge that when you buy a, a new car, it depreciates by forty percent once you take it off the showroom floor.
Sure.
Does that hold true for fire trucks?
Considering that we use it for twenty years, I'd have to, again, do the math. I don't know that it depreciates that greatly. It certainly depreciates, just like any equipment or, or, you know, vehicle that we might purchase. However, we invest in the long term.
Well, I'm just wondering, if we buy a truck that has fifteen years of life into it for half the cost of a new one.
Sure.
That, that would save an enormous amount of money.
Potentially, yes, sir. And then we, we'd have to look at replacing it in about five years after having.
And council should know that when I came on the council, I think it was on three, three or four, I was the one who started this fund. And there were several years that we went that we did not contribute to it because we didn't have the money to do it. So that's why we have five-hundred thousand, but.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, just curious why we shouldn't look into a truck that has fifteen years good life to it with a warranty that might cost half the cost of a brand-new with all the bells and whistles one.
I can certainly, certainly look that up, and we can, we could pursue that if we so choose. Yes, sir.
Mr. Paul?
I suspect that if there's a five-year, a truck five years old on the market, it's because they found it, maybe it didn't fit their needs, that they thought it wouldn't, had to buy something to move up the grade.
Potentially, yes, sir.
We don't want to be caught in that position. When was the last time we purchased a new one?
This ladder truck that we were replacing was built in nineteen ninety-eight, so this next year will be twenty years. This ladder truck that we were replacing was built in nineteen ninety-eight, so this next year will be twenty years.
All right, and twenty years, of course, you don't know, but we probably had the... Now, this says one year after lease commitment. What is a dollar at the end of the lease?
Yes, sir, and the salesman jokingly told me that he does not know that anybody's ever paid the dollar that it's typically given to us, so...
Sure.
We could save that dollar.
What kind of warranties on this?
One year, sir.
And that's the same with a brand-new one, too?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I did a little analysis on this. If we did a five-year payout on the five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's a hundred-and-eighteen, well, as the sheet says. If we did a seven-year, it's eighty-seven. If we did a seven-year, we would save thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars in cash flow a year, and the total additional cost for the two years would, would be an additional eighteen thousand dollars in interest.
Yes, sir.
So, the question becomes an eighteen thousand dollars in interest over the extra versus having the thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars a year additional cash flow. That's something that counsel needs to look at. What are you gonna do with the other truck?
There has been mentioned by some of the council members to keep it as a spare piece of apparatus.
What kind of problem does that hold because of what we have?
Potentially, currently, right now, it has been very problematic. It has been breaking down. It's a twenty-year-old piece of apparatus.
Is there, wait, you mean we bought both trucks at the same time, twenty years ago?
No, sir, no, sir. The engine we purchased about six to seven years ago.
Okay.
We typically offset them on a, on about a ten-year span.
About a ten-year basis?
Yes, sir.
Is there a trade-in value on the old one?
There is. Last, when I spoke, most, there is not a trade-in. Pierce will not take it as a trade-in because of its age. It loses its ISO accreditation after the end of next year. We could sell it through a broker who would take it on cosignment and then take a portion of the monies made. Roughly, they're looking at about a thirty, thirty thousand dollar is what they expect to get by selling it.
Well, it seems to be like having a third truck there that may cause a lot of problems and that's at that age that we'd be best off getting thirty thousand dollars or somewhere in that range that we can.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that Mr. Paul asked about the seven years because I was a little bit concerned about what the payments for a five-year plan would do to the budget and allow you to have proper training and other things for your firemen. Is there any sort of prepayment penalty on this, or can, you know, if we found that we had the money, could we pay extra?
I am not aware if there's a penalty.
Okay.
I would have to find that out.
Can I answer that real quick?
Yes, sir.
In fact, I don't think they can do that.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I had similar concerns as Ms. McLean and Mr. Paul on the payment plan, on knowing how much that we generally set aside for it and looking at the payments. And I like that, thank you, Mr. Paul, for breaking that down on the seven years, how much we would be keeping in the budget versus how much we'd spend extra in interest. That was also my concern as well, as I said, as Ms. McLean. So, that was my only concern there, was that we really did need to seriously look at what, what sort of payment plan we decided to take on.
I, if I may, I made the suggestion to counsel going the five years because that's what we did when purchasing the last major piece of apparatus, the engine. It was just a basis to enter this, but I would certainly, Mr. Paul and I did discuss that, going the seven years and the, you know, the monies that we could save in the long term as well as the interest paid, but certainly, it makes complete sense.
My concern was just making sure you have enough money to do everything else you can do with your budget.
Understood.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. Chief, why would we go with the hundred-foot one as opposed to the hundred-and-ten-foot one?
Although we gained ten foot in height, we would reduce the working weight, the tip-load on the platform. I actually got to look at this other, not the one that's for sale, but the same model. You have, right now with this platform that I'm proposing, you could easily put four to five persons in the platform itself in the bucket and work with this other truck as an option. That reduces down to two to three, depending on the size and if they're fully geared out firefighters, or if it's another victim. It reduces the, the actual tip-load from one thousand pounds to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-pound tip-load, and both of them are at five hundred pounds while flowing water. However, the smaller platform only has one nozzle at the ladder and actually stows behind the platform itself, and it does not have the ability to stretch two additional hose lines off the platform at an elevated working height.
And so, you're confident that the hundred-foot one would serve us for One Castle Hills in the Wedgewood?
Yes, sir. I saw it firsthand the day of the Wedgewood Fire. Platform thirty-two had backed to the building and was able to raise and extend up to the balcony of the eleventh-floor penthouse at the Wedgewood Fire. They removed the two residents from there and brought them down safely. The Wedgewood is actually taller than One Castle Hills.
One last question. I had a resident ask if we could recertify our existing truck. I don't know if it's a great idea because I see that the repair costs are constantly escalating.
Yes, sir.
But for what it's worth, I'd like to know.
You lose the ISO accreditation, which is part of what, it used to significantly factor into what we paid as homeowners on our homeowner's insurance. It's still taken into account. We lose that, that credit for that truck because it becomes twenty years old. As an aging piece of apparatus, they just don't feel that it's dependable, as reliable as what it could be. In addition to, if we purchase the new truck, we actually get additional credits because now we're going from a seventy-five-foot ladder to a one-hundred-foot platform as well. So, it'll actually give us additional credits more than what we would with this truck in service.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The ISO accreditation is based upon the new vehicle, correct?
That is correct.
Would the accreditation go down if we got the new vehicle and retained the older vehicle? And kept it repaired?
It would not go down. We might see a slight increase by having the spare piece of apparatus in the event that one of the frontline pieces went down because we would have one that could replace it and keep it, basically keep us staffed and with all our apparatus, three apparatus in service. I don't know, I'd have to research it to find out what, what it would give us, but I, I'm not a hundred percent on, on that.
Am I assuming to correct that since the truck is gonna be twenty years old, and it would not be ISO accredited, no one really would want the truck?
Not necessarily. You could see in a rural setting, a smaller town, a volunteer department, where they don't take such things into as big a consideration. Truthfully, it would probably end up going to Mexico, Central America, or South America, which is where a large percentage of aging fire trucks go to serve out the remainder of their, their working life.
And what's the trade-in value they were getting?
Right now, they've valued it at approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Frank, did you have something else to say? So, did we ever established where the, did you have something to say? Did we ever establish where the extra money would come from that we would, that we'd be making the payment for above the budget amount that we put in there?
Mayor, the, the budget for two thousand and eighteen has a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-ish surplus that that money would come out of. So, in addition to the fifty thousand, I guess there's another thirty-seven thousand next year.